Welcome to the Monday, August 2nd, 2021 City Council Meeting. Would you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with the routine and justice for all.
Item number one is approval of the minutes.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number two is hearing of public concerns. Mr. Moore, I've noticed you're here. Did you want to address anything right now or wait till your resignation? Okay, that's fine. Number three is an ordinance. Lori, will you please number and read?
Ordinance number 30, 2021, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the City of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2021, and declaring an emergency. This is an appropriation request for the General Fund Parks and Recreation Department, $305,000 for the Marx system, $2,400 for preschool supplies, and $4,550 for amphitheater expenses. That money was received by donations. Total amount of appropriation requested, $311,950.
I move to suspend.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number four is an ordinance. Lori, will you please number and read?
Ordinance number 31, 2021, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Central Poly Bag Corp. for $600,000 City of Bryan refuse bags.
Good evening. Of the eight bid packets that I sent out, we only received two bids. And the lowest bid was from Central Poly for $58,200. The other bid we got was $97,000. So, I don't... This one is what we expected. I don't know what the deal was with the other one or why nobody else bid, but...
Have you dealt with these people before?
Yeah, the last four years is who we've won them from.
Okay.
So I ask that you approve that tonight, please.
I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Move to approve.
I'll second. John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Saedan. Item number five is an ordinance. Lori, will you please number and read?
Ordinance number 32, 2021, an ordinance approving the editing and inclusion of certain ordinances as part of the various component codes of the codified ordinances of the City of Bryan, State of Ohio, and conforming Traffic and General Offenses Code provisions to state law changes.
This is the annual update to the Bryan, Ohio codified ordinances, and you will be receiving that packet here shortly. It is still being printed, so you will see all those changes forthwith to update your books. We just ask that you pass this to conform to the new rules.
Is there anything of exception, Rhonda, that you think we need to attend?
There are a few things that are new. There's some rules, as you see, the very first thing on micro mobility devices. Most of it is just general traffic changes, nothing major. In the general criminal offenses code, there's some issues there. There's one thing, as you can see, there's a reserved section. Criminal child enticement, I think, is still under review for constitutionality.
Okay.
That's why that section is reserved. So there's nothing major.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move to suspend.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second. Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number six is an ordinance. Lori, will you please number and read?
Ordinance number 33, 2021, an ordinance authorizing the Bryan Police and Fire Departments to purchase Marx mobile radios, Marx portable radios, and radio consoles for the Bryan Police and Fire Departments through the State of Ohio Purchasing Program, negating the competitive bid requirement and declaring an emergency.
Before you got the total, what we decided to do with Marx, we want to go with J&amp;K, which is a Kenwood provider. They were the most competitive for what we need. It's our entire dispatch, councils, and then the cruisers for the police departments, our cruiser cars and our portables that we carry on our hips. So that's what... I'm asking for that. That is in my side. And then the fire department is putting 13 portables, and they're manning the fire trucks with mobiles and their cars, too. So we're going to Marx. Fire Department's not fully going to Marx, but we're in that direction, and that's what we need to do to be with the rest of the county.
Refresh my memory, the advantages to Marx.
We can actually communicate. There's a lot less dead spots. We went through, we did all the factories, we went into tool rooms and everything like that, and were able to get in and out. We were in elevator shafts, able to get in and out. But like a radio, it's not 100%. It's going to fail, it's not going to be in every spot, but we can move five foot over the side and it's hitting it. This is going to take us out ahead and worry about the tower. We're not going to maintain our tower and repeaters and stuff like that. It's going to be a system through the state that they're going to maintain. So those are the advantages. And we'll be able to communicate anywhere in the state with Marx and to Defiance County, any Ohio county we can communicate with. So that's the benefit of that, that we won't have any loss in services. If you're outside, we should have no loss of service.
I hear talk about where you could be standing in Cincinnati and communicate with somebody in Williams County.
The way it hits off... The radio itself will connect to a tower down in Cincinnati and send it, direct it to us. It's sort of like a cellphone system. I mean, at one point, there was numbers, and some of them had keypads. You could type in a number and actually call that portable radio. That's not going to be a function the state's going to provide because it eats a lot of bandwidth and everything else up, so... But that is essentially what it is. We can be anywhere in the State of Ohio and talk back to Bryan.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to suspend.
Second. Go ahead.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second. John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number seven is a resolution. Lori, will you please number and read?
Resolution number 27, 2021, a resolution providing for the repayment of an inter-fund cash advance. This is a repayment of $20,000 from the probation grant 2022-2023 fund for the 1% general income tax fund. The reason for the $20,000 advance was because the state hadn't advanced the funds for the new probation grant, but those funds have now been received, so we'd like to return the money back to the 1%.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number eight is a resolution. Lori, will you please number and read?
Resolution number 28, 2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required.
Good evening. This is a yearly item we do early in September. The applications are due at the county engineer's office, and then they meet through county committee and work their way up hopefully. We're going to apply for another sanitary sewer project. The ones we received last year was paving for Brunacardi Way. We didn't receive any utility ones, but we're going to apply again for a sewer project in this one. It's going to be the $450,000 to $550,000 range. I still have to work out where this... Where I feel the sweet spot is going to be, the more... The less grant funds and the more local funding you ask for, the better the points are. So I want to try and work that out there. And actually, water line will score higher than sanitary, so I got to kind of balance the two out so we're at even playing field there. Maybe have us do a little smaller project to kind of be competitive statewide in that. So with that, I request you suspend and approve this so we can apply for this.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to adopt.
Second. Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thanks, Brian. Item number nine, a resolution. Lori, will you please number and read?
Resolution number 29, 2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC, state capital improvement and/or local transportation improvement programs, and to execute contracts as required.
Same thing. It used to be we could just do one resolution for all the projects, but now the state wants them project-specific. So similar project, we're going to replace potentially some water lines on South Lynn Street. I don't know if we're going to go to the Board of Public Affairs tomorrow night or in two weeks, but as long as it's done by early September, we're in good shape. So similar project, $350,000 to $500,000 range. So I just request you suspend and authorize me to do this.
Was this one of the... The one you were talking about balancing out?
Yeah, correct, correct, yeah. The water line score is a little bit higher just by default because it's more of a health and safety issue than sanitary. So then they can do a bigger project and be competitive, but sewer, we have to do a little smaller project to keep the same competitive level statewide.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'll motion to suspend.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number 10, a resolution. Lori, will you please number and read?
Resolution number 30, 2021, a resolution authorizing the mayor, city engineer, and clerk treasurer to prepare and submit an application for the water and wastewater infrastructure grant and to execute contracts as required.
Okay. Welcome to my Monday morning. When I get to work this morning, there was a email from the state that a new program is opened up. We have 14 days to prepare and submit an application. There's $250 million statewide available for water and sewer projects. You have to be shovel-ready and ready to go. Unfortunately, we have several sanitary sewer projects that are shovel-ready and also a water line project that's ready to go as well. So I don't really want to go into a lot of detail in it because we're still trying to understand the points ranking system. I was given seven pages here with multiple checklists, and my head's still spinning as I'm going through it, but the most important thing was letting you to allow me to prepare these applications. So I'm going to be a little vague on what we're doing, but I would like to ask for some free money. So with that, I would request you suspend and allow me to do this and try.
I move to suspend so you can apply for these. This one.
Thank you.
I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Uh, yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Sorry for being vague, but I'll fill you in later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Item number 11, a resolution. Lori, will you please number and read?
Resolution number 31, 2021, a resolution to set the employee annual premium rate for health insurance for the period September 1st, 2021, through August 31st, 2022, and declaring an emergency. This is a request to do our annual health insurance. This year, we received an initial quote that we would receive a 19 and 1/2 increase. We have... Did have major discussions on that and had that reduced to a 10% increase. This is the first double-digit increase we've had since 2007, 2008. I'd just like to point out that overall, our five-year average on health insurance has averaged at 3.49%, and our 10-year average is 3.79%. We are heavily, as department heads, trying to encourage our employees to use the Activate Everhelp system to go ahead and utilize that to their best abilities for pharmacy as well as medical purposes. And we hope to see our rates come back into line the way that we would like to see them, but of course, it's all experience-driven. So we are requesting that council and tomorrow night, the board approve this for our health insurance.
Do you think there's a connect with the employees to understand that since they pay a portion, if they go to Activate, that actually saves them money as well as providing the same quality of service?
I think we're working to keep our employees informed of that, Mr. Buss, and try to encourage them to do so. Unfortunately, you can't dictate where somebody receives their medical services.
Sure.
But the formulary of Activate Everside is very robust. I mean, they've got 76 drugs on formulary, so we are heavily encouraging our employees to do so, and all department heads have been so advised of the medical increase that we are looking at and to, again, promote Activate Everside.
Good, thank you. I'd move to suspend.
I'll second. John?
Yes.
Jim? Oh, I'm sorry, Judy. Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number 12, an ordinance. Lori, will you please number and read?
Ordinance number 34, 2021, an ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the City of Bryan for the month ending August 31st, 2021. This is a transfer request of $400,000 from the 1% income tax fund to the 101 General Fund for general spending purposes. A transfer of $75,000 from the 1% income tax fund to the 203 Street Department Fund for general spending purposes. A transfer of $400,000 from the 0.5% income tax fund to the 401 Capital Improvement Fund for ongoing capital projects. A transfer of $50,000 from the 0.5% income tax fund to the 505 Street or Daring Maintenance Fund for general expenses. And a transfer request of $75,000 from the Health Insurance Fund to the Health Insurance Reserve Fund as requested by Medical Mutual to allow for the runout of claims should we ever drop out of Medical Mutual insurance for health insurance. Total amount of transfer requested, $1 million.
I'll motion to suspend.
Second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number 13, it's a new hire for the Parks. Ben?
Good evening, council. The sheets you have in front of you is my request to hire April Smith as our new arborist horticulturist. As you are aware, court made us aware that he would be leaving us the end of November. We've been looking for quite some time now to try to find the best replacement for him, and I think we found that in April. So I would request that you approve her hire. She is ready to start as soon as possible.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Up next, item number 14, is a status change in the Parks Department. Chief Chappa?
Once again, Ian Younts has been around with us for a year, and he's ready to move on to the one-step patrolman. So I'm requesting that he's put to full-time status as a prime police officer and giving the wage through the OPVA.
I thought I was going nuts when I saw this because I just took his card up to him last week. What happened?
He's going to the military. He's doing...
Okay, yeah.
He's being deployed for...
But now he's not?
No, he is.
No, he's deployed, so we'll put him on inactive status for the 300 and some days.
He's a reservist.
Okay.
So, yeah.
He intends to come back.
I was confused, too. Thank you.
Yep, yeah.
I was confused with that, and I thought, wait a minute.
No, he's doing the... He's being deployed overseas for a year, so...
Okay.
We're just going to hold his job for him like we would done anyway, but Ian is still with us and has all intentions of coming back to us.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clearing that up. I motion to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Item number 15 is a resignation.
I'm here to tender Assistant Chief Gary Moore's resignation, and he is here, so if you have any questions, you can go and speak with Gary.
Come on up, Gary, for Mr. Moore.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to thank the City of Bryan, Rhonda, the mayor. Lori, you guys have all been great, wonderful to work with. I appreciate that. And I appreciate the council giving me the opportunity to come on as assistant chief and fulfill that position for you guys. The only thing I want to do is clarify, I'm leaving on my own terms. It's not because of family issues. It's just it's time for me to go from what I'm going through right now, so... But it has nothing to do with family. I know that's the rumor that's being around. But I just want to say thank you all very much for everything you've done.
I know. You can stay there for just a few seconds if you want. I know council's got some questions, I believe. I know I have some questions because after it came out in the Bryan Times, my phone went crazy. And I just need some clarification on some stuff. I heard that there was an incident out by your patrol car on Friday where you were in your patrol car getting ready to leave, and Chief Chappa followed you. What happened in that? Because I've heard so many different rumors about it. I'd kind of like to hear it from you exactly what happened. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I mean, I've heard it like five different times, five different versions.
The true version is I was summoned to pick up the chief over at where we get our radios done and the cruisers, 35 minutes away. I picked up the chief, and he was talking to me about several different things on the way back. Actually... I'm sorry. I'm not trying to throw anybody in the bus, but for 30 to 35 minutes, I was ridiculing as to not being able to do my job. He does the job a lot better than I do. He wasn't sure why I was hired. I mean, it was ridiculed for 35 minutes. We got back to the office. I said, "I'm done, I'm going home, I'm sick." And he persistently kept saying, "No, you got to talk to me, you got to talk to me." I said, "No, I'm going home." There was some foul language thrown out there also. I went to my cruiser, he followed me in my cruiser, tried to use the passenger door to get the key in, and I just took off.
This was on Butler Street? Because I heard it was on Butler Street.
It was right outside the PD, okay? So I left. Back to my driveway, the cruiser in the driveway. I went to exit my cruiser, and I seen Mr. Chappa coming down my driveway. So I went in my dwelling, my residence, I locked the door, and Mr. Chappa kept banging on the door, and I said, "Get off my property." I asked him that two, three times, to leave me alone and get off my property. I didn't know this at the time when I got home, but my wife was out in the garden, and she heard all the yelling and screaming going on. She come up to the door and said, "Honey, it's me." So I let her in. At that time, Mr. Chappa come in also. He said, "We need to talk." And I said persistently, "I'm done talking." I asked him once more to get off my property. My wife got scared and asked me if I should, she should call the sheriff because he entered our residence. I said, "No, just let it go, I'll take care of it." It bothered me, the actions that were taken to make my wife upset. That really ticks me off. I don't care about myself. You don't mess with my family. That's what happened. Then when I got back to work, Mr. Chappa said, "I'm writing you up for that because I left my post." I said, "Okay." He said, "I talked to the mayor, and we're gonna write you up." I didn't know if he did or not. That's what it was told. So I get back in, a week later, I get rolled up for this incident, okay? Never been rolled up before. Get rolled up for this incident. In this write-up, there's several things that make no sense at all. One of the incidents was, he asked me how I was doing on this investigation. This is on, this is the preliminary before we got to the, at the PD, okay? I said, "I'm doing nothing on this investigation." Investigation, and I brought a copy, it was marked the eighteenth, which is Friday, the twenty-first is Monday, so I didn't get any time to do anything on that speech. An investigation, sir, was internal investigation, right? You had to do?
We hadn't started on that one.
Right. Is that an investigation you're solving?
Yeah.
Yeah. So I didn't have time to work on it yet. This is ten o'clock in the morning, Friday, got it from, or ten o'clock in the morning, Monday, when I got this. The other thing is the parade, the Fourth of July parade, or the fireworks, I'm sorry, the fireworks traffic control. Mr. Chappa asked me to take care of that, okay? I didn't realize it at first, but he meant for me to take care of it. He had it up on the board, he was very specific. I said, "Okay." I went in and talked to Mr. Chappa about it, and he said, "I'll show you, or explain to you how to do that in the past that we've done it." I said, "That's fine." I went in a few days later, I said, "Do you have time to talk to me?" He said, "No, I don't have time to talk to you." So in this write-up also says, "I'm not gonna breastfeed you," and I did say that because he knew I wanted to talk to him about it, but I'm not gonna go in there every day and ask him to talk to him about it. Okay, so I did say that. And there also in this write-up says, I said, "He was a better officer than I am." And I told him that. After thirty minutes of ridiculing me, not how I do my job, I said, "Chris, you're just a better officer than I am. You can do it twice as good. You're right." You can't argue with a guy that's always right. So I just backed down, and that's what happened with that incident.
Okay, thank you. Any questions that the council may have?
I, I'd like to hear Mr. Chappa.
Sure.
From his side of it.
Is this the proper venue for this?
I don't know.
It really is inappropriate to begin with. This is internal, this shouldn't even be happening, but since you've opened the door, I think he has a right to respond.
Uh huh, that's what I'm thinking.
We, he did pick me up. Actually, I picked him up at Mark Fishoff's place. I told him I would be there, I believe it was nine-thirty. I was there at nine-thirty-four, and he was already making phone calls. We get in the car, we head back, and I asked him what he's doing with several things. At one point, he told me nothing. And I asked, "What do you mean, 'nothing'?" And he said, "I'm not doing with it." And, "Okay, so what are you doing with this?" "I'm not doing nothing with that either." "What are you doing with this?" "I'm not doing with this." Get to the investigation that he was supposed to be doing. Have you even got the minimal down? The basics of an investigation, the dates of subject, and everything like that. And then I was told that he wasn't gonna breastfeed me at one point, also that if I wanted those dates, I could go up to the records clerk and get them myself. That's not the point of the investigation, for me to do the investigation. Told me just go up and get them myself, that they're there in not-so-many terms. I didn't believe I was berating him or putting him down, I just simply asked what he was doing. He told me he hasn't been doing, and I asked why. And then I told him, I said, "Gary," I said, "some of these investigations I had to do when I was detective, I had to answer calls and do backgrounds and everything else because it led into the backgrounds." Asked where they, where we were at with the backgrounds. So that's what brought that conversation on. I went out to the car, spoke with him. We spoke in the car, he got back in. It wasn't heated discussion, at least we were talking. That's why I said, "We need to continue talking to get it cleared up." He then went and left, so I followed him up to his house. I didn't, okay, maybe, he opened the door, he talked, he gave me a hug before we left. So this whole thing is beyond me.
I think the thing that's bothering me is, we've lost quite a few officers recently. The Bryan Times even pointed that out.
Have you looked to see what those officers were left for?
I, I talked to Tony Plots before he left. I talked to him myself. I went over to his home and talked to him.
Okay.
I talked to Chief Willis before he left. I did that myself. Nobody knows that, but I did that. And there are some things that I had heard that bothered me. I'm not gonna say what they are, but with this incident now, I'm just beginning to wonder if there shouldn't be some kind of an investigation here. I don't know.
I, I guess, you know, what, what bothers me about this is, is, you know, when we hired Mr. Moore and Mr. Ruskey, it was kind of a dream team. And how long, how long have you been employed with?
Seven months.
I'm probably seven months, sir. It just seems like an awful quick turnaround. And is, is this the only incident, or are there other incidents? No, there are others? Okay. That concerns me also. And I also have talked to some of the other former employees, and I know there are some concerns there, so. I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna drag anybody through any mood or anything here. I, I don't think that's, that would be appropriate.
I think we're past that point.
Well, I, I think it needs to, to stop here, but, yeah.
I agree. Can we do like an investigation, or?
There's been no allegations of misconduct, so no.
What happens if we don't accept his resignation?
Then he continues to work for Bryan Police Department. I've never heard of anyone not accepting someone's resignation when they've asked to resign, but that's, that's the reality of that.
I, I got, I'm just unhappy with it.
I am too.
If these things are happening, they need to stop. We don't treat people that way. That's not what the city, that's not what any city is about. You have to treat people with respect. I don't care if you're a boss or you're on a lowlife, I don't care. There's a certain amount of respect that every single human being on this earth deserves, period. That's, that's me. If someone has hurt you, you need to sit down like two grown gentlemen and talk it out. Not nasty words, not fighting. That's kid's stuff, and I just, I don't know. There has to be an answer someplace. I'm not smart enough to figure out what it is.
So what's on the table?
I have no idea. I'd like there to be an investigation done, just to see how people are being treated.
Well, if that's the case, I think there's even more investigation on that. There's several instances of mistreatment that need to be investigated that I can put forward too, so.
And that's what we want to find out?
Well, I don't think that's the cannon worm we want to open.
Well, maybe it should be though, Chris.
Well, no, because this isn't, this is, this is not, this is not the proper venue to have this discussion in the way you're doing it.
What's the proper venue?
You've got executive session that you could have took this to.
Then maybe we need to put this into executive session.
Well, you know what? The cat's, cat's out the bag, you've already got it out now.
We can't put executive session on because it's not on the agenda. We can't add it. There's notification requirements for the local paper, forty-eight hours in advance. I think the problem that I'm having here is that Chief Chappa reached out to you all individually a week ago to let you know if you had questions to reach out to him, and instead, we've broken our council rules where someone is not speaking during hearing of public concerns. The person has not come to me directly. There is an exit interview scheduled for later this week. That, none of that has been done, and the chief, I don't believe, and you can back, I don't think he's implying that I disrespect anyone in the PD. And I think that's where maybe you were taking that, so I just wanna.
I know, and he called.
If either of them feel I disrespect them.
Chief Chappa did call me, and I said I'd have questions at council. I did say that.
He also called me, I was on vacation in North Carolina, at an ice cream shop. I really wasn't thinking along these terms, and if he, I said to him, he said, "Do you have any questions?" I said, "Not now, but I might later." I was not even thinking along those terms at that point. So once I got a chance to process things, then I had some questions.
And I guess I'm just, I think we've done this before, where council knows that if they have something like executive session to request, they get it to us by Thursday so that we can add it for the proper notification, like last Thursday. At this point, my hands are tied because no executive session was put on the agenda at all. We can't add this now.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna motion to accept Gary Moore's resignation.
I'll second that.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
No.
Rick?
No.
Mary?
No.
So just to clear, are you gonna continue working? Can you come up to the podium? Sorry, we have a microphone requirement, I'm over there.
Yes, I can continue working. If it's gonna be a hostile environment, I will bring it to your attention. I'm not gonna put up with that.
So at this point, do we, I've never had this happen, so I'm sorry.
I haven't either. And Rhonda, be honest with you.
Do we rescind the resignation?
I don't wanna cause problems for the city of Bryan. All I'm saying is, there's a major issue there. Don't take my word for it. You guys don't know me. Find out for yourselves. I mean, talk to the people themselves. Don't take my word for it. All you have to do is talk. You'll find the answers that you want. I can't give you the answers, and if I do, it's just my word.
Well, some of them, I have heard that some of the time that they have been told they can't talk to council members. They're not allowed to talk to council members.
I myself was told that because you guys would throw mud on me and my reputation. Ma'am, all I have is my reputation.
I don't do that.
I know that, but I was told that, and that's the only thing I have to offer, is my reputation. I have my background and my reputation, and that to me is everything.
It should be.
With that advice that I was given, I thought, "No, something really should be done."
And, and that was one thing when, when you were hired, that preceded you, was your reputation?
Yes, sir.
And it was a good reputation?
I have a good reputation, and I'm gonna leave Bryan PD with a good reputation. This was stepping out of my bounds because I was asked by so many people to address this issue, and that's why I'm here.
Well, let's hope that this is, that this has been brought up, that there, things change, and if not, then we're gonna have to do something for that. We're gonna have to investigate or something.
I don't know what, what could change, that's not in my power, but that's up to you. Any other questions for me?
I don't know.
So you see council's role as being personnel administrative?
Yes, sir.
According to the charter, we are not.
Okay.
We are legislative.
Okay.
Not personnel administrative. That doesn't mean that you cannot talk to us. I agree one hundred percent with Judy, that, believe me, many, many have. Many city employees, as well as many non-city employees, talk to me about a variety of things. When it comes to, if they have a complaint, if that's, and it's happened once, a city employee comes and complains, my response is, I then tell them, "Are you willing to tell the mayor, if, if it's at that level, are you willing to tell the mayor this?" And in that particular case, the answer was yes, and I referred them. That, I think, is more of our rule. For me to solicit, which is what I thought I heard you saying, for me to solicit, to go to police officers and ask them, what do they think of this or that or the other thing, is generally not even a wise administrative thing to do. It, it ends up creating all sorts of difficulty in trying to create a good communication with each individuals that are there. So I don't want to confuse you, I just wondered what your thoughts were, and I, now that helps to understand. Actually, if you look, and I believe it's Article Three and Four in the charter, we are charged with legislative. That does not mean that we cannot and are not accepting of people talking to us, but for me to go and solicit to Ben's people, what do you think about, what's your thoughts on Ben? Personally, I find that inappropriate.
That could very well be, sir. All I'm saying is, it's a major issue. Somebody should address it. Look back in the past, look into the future. It's, it's a major issue. Bryan is the quality of city that we all live in. We need to address it. The mayor and I are friends, that's why I did not go directly to her, because I didn't want her getting involved.
But I am with her.
She, she is the person.
And then Mary, also, when you had to talk with Chief Chappa, you should've addressed me on that too.
What piece? I thought you would've asked us to go to the city.
No, I thought that you would've come and asked me how I felt about what he said about the write-up, but it wasn't done. So I guess we're both in there.
You mean, I should've come to you directly?
Why wouldn't you ask me my side of the story?
He's saying there's two sides to every story.
Yes, ma'am.
You heard one, but not the other.
Yes, I'm not disputing that at all, but I would expect someone, if they know what the charter says and what the governing body is at the city, that they would've come to me versus going to the council president or someone else and coming up here. I had no knowledge, and we're coming to a meeting, and I understand, like.
Right.
It's an open meeting. Typically, we would've had you on item two, things were changed for tonight, but I, I think even in the interview process, when I sat with you on, you knew that I was the person that needed to be talked to.
Absolutely.
And that hasn't happened.
Right.
I've come in and asked you, "How are you doing?" "Great."
I thought that, that incident that happened between Mr. Chappa and I was gonna be an isolated incident. I didn't know he was gonna come tell you about it. I didn't know I was gonna get reprimanded for it. That's something he induced. I didn't know that. At that point is where I thought, well, maybe you would get ahold of me to say, "What is your side of the story?" We did, Captain Ruskey and I did come talk to you two months prior to being hired. Told you we had a slight problem. You did try to address it.
And I, and I thought that we had worked through things in my follow-up, what you indicated, and.
You did.
Unless you were not being honest with me, that things were better.
Sometimes they were, and then it just went to, it went bad.
So I guess that's the piece that makes it hard for, for the administrator, is if I don't know, and if I ask you directly and you say things are great, like, I have to take that at face value.
Okay.
And you have to make those statements to me.
Okay. It's not just.
And the piece of the write-up, I think that actually probably was more a conversation with legal. I'm usually advised of those on the back end because I am the mayor in case there's some, but I, like, that's part of, I didn't sign off on a write-up. I didn't see it.
Right, he was aware of it. Chief Chappa told me, or Mr. Chappa told me he told you about it.
I was aware of it afterwards, yes.
Yes. I just felt like, that's fine, I understood your, your side of the story then, I understood where you stood then. So I wasn't even gonna address this at this council meeting tonight until I was put on the spot. I didn't think this should be addressed in public form either, when I was asked about it, and that's what brought it out.
You mean, you're here with your family, though, so there was.
I'm here with my family because.
And I appreciate that, and I did not hear the rumor that there were any family.
That's the rumor that I was told, and that's why I wanted to bring the family in to verify that.
When that kind of stuff happens in government, it's not the first time that some rumor like that's happened. It is devastating to a family to have to hear that, so for that, I apologize if anyone has said that to any member of your family or about you, because I've been in that position before, and it's not.
We have.
Okay? I think I'm, I just wanna keep it on the subject of, you've had my cell phone number for.
Forever.
Twenty years.
Yes.
And I have specifically been in the PD asking you how things are, and you have up until this point told me good. When you gave your resignation, to be very honest, we've had union negotiations for two days, there have been a lot of things on my schedule, that if you would've called me, I would've probably at eight o'clock at night called you, because that's when I would've been free, but during your shift hours, I hadn't had the availability last week to go down to the PD.
Mayor?
In truth.
Mayor, I'm not holding you, I'm not blaming this on anybody, okay? I don't mean to spearhead you that way. You're doing an outstanding job, there's no doubt about it, everybody knows that. Here's my only issue with everything. There's a problem, it should be addressed, and nobody, and I mean nobody, has a right to talk to a person the way I was talked to. It's an ongoing issue. So my problem was, I thought I would just get out, save everybody the embarrassment of whatever there is. I didn't know it was gonna go on Facebook, I didn't know it was gonna be a public issue. I'm not that way.
We certainly didn't either.
Yeah. You guys got some problems. Go back, look. I'm not your solution, I realize that. I'm just the one that's bringing it out to the public, or bringing it out to you, and I'm sorry it has to be on this venue. The mayor's helped me on several different things, personal things. Personal things. He's been outstanding. Rhonda and Lori, I mean, you can't get a better group of people. Some of you guys I don't know, some of you I do. City of Brian deserves better. That's all I can say. I can't tell you about internal investigation. I can't tell you about anything that. That's all your guys' departments. That's not mine. You asked me to come up here to speak, and that's what I'm doing. I'm just venting. It's come from honesty, because that's the way I am. You don't have to listen. If you turn down my resignation, I'll stay there. I'll do whatever Chief Chappa tells me to do. That's fine. It's not gonna be a comfortable situation.
It can be if everybody stops and thinks before they do something. Stop and think what's coming out of your mouth, and it can, it can work itself out.
Ma'am, you're right. It probably could. It probably could.
I sound like I'm correcting my kids?
No.
But truthfully, that's, uh, there's been hurt feelings on both sides for both of you gentlemen. You're both good men. Work it out, so we don't have a problem.
I don't have a problem with that.
This is both of your incomes, and there's no reason why this, we can't continue to work. You're a good policeman, you're a great policeman, and our, we did this, Chris, because this is what you wanted. You came to council and said, "I want these two guys, they're gonna really benefit this department." And council went along with you on that. Now let's make it work.
And I would, I would second that. That's, that's the reason that I, I voted no, was because, at first, I was not for adding an assistant chief. But as it was sold to me and the, the reputation of the people involved, I felt that it could be a very positive thing for the community, and I still feel that way. And I'm hoping that we're able to resolve the issue so that we can move forward.
Okay. Do you have any questions?
I don't have a second, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number 16, is it resolution from the fire?
Good evening, council. Colton Myers has moved to Sherwood, Ohio, and is no longer able to meet his commitment with the Brian Fire Department, so I ask that you accept his resignation from the Fire Department.
I'm going to approve. I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
With that, we'll go around the room. Anyone from the city? Anyone from DMU?
He is the best there is, Ed.
John?
Uh, yeah, um, congrats to, uh, April and Ian. Um, I know April from the greenhouse, and I think that's gonna be an excellent, uh, choice. She's a, comes from a farm family and, um, I ju, I know her, she, I'm a beekeeper and she's a beekeeper. Uh, she's, I think she's gonna fit well into the Brian Parks and Rec. I really do. I think that's a really good personality, uh, mix as well. And, uh, also, um, wish the best to, uh, Colton, um, in terms of, uh, where he's going and what he's doing. Um, I find it somewhat interesting that we don't have the same kinds of questions that are being asked when those things occur. Uh, and, and I think that's something that we all need to reflect on as well. But I will say, the reason that I voted and will vote yes on people that resign is because if you want to resign, I just don't feel as though I have the right to say no. So, um, from my perspective, I think that's my two cents as to why, when I, when I voted, why I voted, uh, the way I did and will continue to do so, because I wanna respect your right to leave that situation. Um, and then, um, if you want to say, I think that works well too, and I appreciate what Judy said, and I hope that, uh, also works, works to the advantage of, uh, Brian and to the both of you individually. And that's it.
Judy?
I would like to say, uh, welcome to April Smith and wish her many years of working at the, from the Brian Parks Department. Congratulations to Ian, and good luck when you go overseas. And thank you to Colton Meyer. And I would just like to say, uh, gentlemen, I'm gonna be doing a lot of praying for you. And we can work this, we can do this. We can do this. We all work together.
Rick?
Um, mostly the, the same sentiments as April Smith. Uh, she's got big shoes to fill, but, uh, uh, wish her the best of luck, and I'm sure she'll do a fine job. Uh, Ben and I have had several conversations, and I feel very good about, about her selection there. Colton Myers, uh, good luck, uh, with everything as you move forward, and as well as Ian Yaps. Uh, you know, thank you for, for your service in advance, and, uh, welcome back when you come back, and, uh, we look forward to that.
Jim?
I'd like to say, uh, congratulations to April, uh, and congratulations to Ian. We look forward to your service. Uh, wish the best for Colton. And, uh, you know, I'm just gonna kinda say what, what John said on the resignation. I mean, if you wanna resign, that's why I voted yes. So, uh, if you guys wanna work together, so be it. So that's all I gotta say.